Select Board Concerns?
I got everything in front of me here.
Okay. Good evening.
We're going to go with Citizens Input yesterday's.
Citizens Input. Are you guys here for something that's not, the agenda's on the, on the screen. Are you here for something that's not on the screen? Okay. This would be the place. Okay. Okay, the dispensary ordinance, number six.
Well, you'll notice two in front of us. Two ordinances in front of you.
Which one is which?
Okay, if you look at, one that has, A has four lines and one has, A has three lines. Those are the difference. The three lines one is the one without.
So, the, so the one with three lines, we're going to call number one.
Yeah.
And the one with four lines, whatever, we're going to call number two.
It's fine. Number one represent, well, the question was raised at the, at the last meeting regarding the penalties and whether we should leave them in or not.
Right.
In my conversations with the attorney, well, just backing up a little bit, the first question was, do we have any other penalties in town for alcohol and tobacco use on property? We do not. The question then became, do we want to create an ordinance that's going to match this for those two items, adding those two items separately where we just do the alcohol and tobacco and other drug use with the same fines? And then if the town is not looking for the fines for the public consumption, number one basically removes any of the reference to the town property, Town of Killington property. We're just taking that out of that piece of the ordinance. So, we take the line out that says, provide penalties for the use of marijuana on Town of Killington property, and we take out item number 2C on number two. The consumption of marijuana on any property or any building or structure owned or controlled by the town is prohibited. We would just remove those, and that would not be addressed. The penalties would be left in place so that we have enforceability for just the medical marijuana dispensary issues. He recommended leaving those in, but we would take that piece out if he didn't want to go with the penalties. So, it's a question of, do we, do we want to have the penalties for this? And if we do, do we want to add at a future date the penalties related to smoking or drinking on town property?
This is where I'm coming from. I mean, all this is like, it's, it's, what we're, what I'm looking at is it's, it's the regulation of dispensaries.
Right.
In the Town of Killington.
And that's, that's number one.
And A says, the purpose of this ordinance is to regulate the establishment operations of medical marijuana dispensaries within Town of Killington pursuant to whatever, 24 VSA 1971B. You know, this ordinance shall be a civil ordinance. All this other stuff to me that, you know, you start getting into marijuana have same meaning as, and dispensary shall, I mean, to me, it's like, we're...
That's just the definition.
I'm saying, I am saying, and I will vote for, that there will not be a medical dispensary of marijuana in, medical marijuana dispensary in the Town of Killington. This other stuff about getting into what hemp is and what marijuana is and fining somebody and everything else, I don't know what that has to do with allowing or not allowing a dispensary.
Hemp definition is there just so that it, because it's excluded in the next section?
Yeah, I know.
So, I mean, and the enforcement, he said, you want to leave that because you have to have some authority to go deal with it if somebody did put one in against the rules, and you have to be able to go to court and have these other pieces in place. So, all of this is saying, if you look at number one, the only thing that's dealing with is the dispensaries. It is not dealing with any public consumption or fines for that use. The item number two has it in there where we have the penalty for consumption on public land. Number one does not have any of that.
Well, then, number one would be the one that I would be moving forward with.
Right.
Because I don't think we should be getting involved in. I mean, the whole thing is, but number one on the back on page two is penalties and cost. So, if it has nothing about smoking on property or whatever, then what I don't understand here is that, you know, if we write, if we say that there is no medical marijuana dispensaries in the Town of Killington allowed, okay, um, how do you get a first offense? Because if somebody's going to open up a business in town...
That's a penalty on opening. If they open a business, if they try to open a business, they get fined.
Right.
So, but he said, in order for this to be enforceable, to go to court to get them out if they did it, we, he said, he recommended leaving all that in there.
So, that is on there, but I mean...
That's all it's for.
But we also already have, if somebody opens up a business in the Town of Killington without coming and getting, there's a lot higher of a fine than a hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars.
What he's saying is that we can't, should it end up in a court case, you cannot, when you go to court, suddenly come up with a fine.
Right, okay.
It has to be something that's...
There's something we have to be able to do.
Already there.
So, Paige, I get it now.
And then you have the choice of whether you enforce the fine or not.
Right. Well, so, so then that would change my mind on the five hundred dol, I mean, first offense, second offense, third offense? I mean, to me, doesn't make any sense. So, to me, I'm okay with everything, the enforcement and everything, you know, all the way through the first page, but if somebody opens up a medical marijuana dispensary and it's not allowed in the Town of Killington, then add another zero. First offense is $50,000 fine. Deter it from being, opening up. Because if you're going to go to, if someone's going to open up a medical marijuana dispensary that the Town of Killington is not permitting, okay, then, and it's going to go to court, what's $500 for someone opening up a business?
The other piece of this, if it's not allowed by ordinance, it will be in violation of zoning, and then you have the $200 a day penalty that can be attached.
Forget about the $200. I mean, it's $50,000 for opening up a business that we're not allowed in, in the Town of Killington.
Well, depending on how, and I don't know specifics on how it was written, the penalty when it relates to the use of marijuana and the legalization, the maximum fine allowed is $800 as it relates to...
For the use.
But this isn't about the use.
This is not use.
Right.
This is about opening up a business in the Town of Killington. An illegal business.
Well, you know, if you'd like to make it $5,000 or something, then, you know, we can, I can fund that buy down.
$50,000.
Well, I'll run it.
I think we need to ask the...
Yeah, ask, ask.
I just find out what we're going to do.
We're moving forward with number, I, I would like to move forward with number one. I don't want to get into that somebody is smoking weed or, or, the way this thing is written up is that they're taking a, a, a medicine that's in a gummy bear or a cookie or whatever, and then, and then we say, we want to see what's in your cookie. I mean, there's no way we can do that. It's ridiculous, you know? And then once again, this is saying for medical marijuana, it's not saying, so the person says, well, that's not my medical, it's, this is my recreational. Don't find me. So, I would like to move forward with one.
And I'll just check on the fines.
But I would just say that it's ridiculous saying, you know, first offense, second offense, third offense. So, if someone could open up a business and just keep on getting...
So, we really just have to have one violation is what it would be.
Right.
To open an illegal business.
And it has to be meaningful.
Right.
If you're caught opening up a, an illegal business in the Town of Killington, now, I know there's a lot of people out there, and we're on TV now, and it'll probably make the newspaper and everything, but you know, when, when I left here at the last meeting on this, it's kind of ridiculous because prior to July 1st of 2018, when recreational weed got, got, got approved in the state of Vermont, there was something like 5,700 medical marijuana licenses in the state of Vermont. Okay? At the end of March of 2019, I believe it was down to 5,250.
It was...
And now, at the end of June, you had a number, was it 5,100? So, it was 5,100. So, as each month goes by, more and more people are not renewing their medical marijuana licenses with the state of Vermont. In the state of Vermont handbook and statutes, it states, there are five dispensaries. There's talk of a sixth dispensary.
Right.
And the only way the sixth dispensary will come online in the state of Vermont is if there are 7,000 medical marijuana licenses issued. The number's not growing, the number's going down.
And that, that would ask for a 40% increase in what's presently allowed.
Correct. Then, then the other thing is, is that when people are coming in here and saying that I, and I'm not going to talk for others, but I am denying somebody their medicine, okay? Well, medical marijuana, the beauty of it is, is that there's this thing called CBD nowadays, and we do have a CBD shop in town, and we are not outlawing that shop. Because it's a CBD shop, and most people that are on medical marijuana, they would rather have the CBD because they don't want to get that high of the THC.
Right.
So, I mean, number one, if people want to argue with what I'm going to vote or how I'm going to vote on this, that I don't believe we should have a medical marijuana dispensary in the Town of Killington, when there's only, I think, 340 in Rutland County? So, in all of Rutland County, there's 340 medical marijuana licenses, and there is already one dispensary within Rutland County.
In Brandon.
Okay? So, I don't know how a business is going to survive with 340. But it is true that these companies, there's three companies that hold licenses for five places, and they are going into Montpelier, and they are soliciting to have that, they are the first ones to get a license for retail marijuana if it becomes, or when it becomes available. Now, I know that the one shop that is in town that is legally selling CBD as medicine, okay, she has a lot of work put into this company. She's been here for over a decade, and I would hate to see that somebody comes in...
Someone else comes in and kicks her out.
And if they get open for six months or a, I think they're pushing for six months or a year that a medical dispensary will be able to sell retail before anyone else, that puts somebody that's been in business in the Town of Killington really at a bad disadvantage. So, it's not just about, this is not about denying anyone their medicine, you know? They can get their medicine at a CBD store already in town, or they can grow it themselves, or somebody else can grow it for them.
And the, I'm not being flippant about this, but I have to drive 30 minutes to get my prescription, and I don't have the option of...
Growing your prescription.
Growing it myself.
Right.
You know, I, or making it myself. So, I, I don't see having to go to Brandon once a month as being a reason to, okay, I don't see it as a, as carrying a lot of weight.
Well, the other thing that's funny about that is, is that a medical dispensary has the right to deliver to a person that can't come. Hannaford's is not going to deliver the medicine to me. I'm going to have to send someone down, or I'm going to have to get it myself. So, I mean, that, I just want to get that all out there because I'm not against someone getting their medicine. I am really looking out for somebody that's been in business here for a long time, and, and there's only 340 patients, and it's shrinking each month as the licenses have to be renewed.
Okay. So, what would you like to see?
I would like to...
On the ordinance for the next meeting?
I would like to see the penalties and costs for somebody opening up a, an illegal medical marijuana dispensary.
We need to see what we can legally change this to.
Legally do, correct. And it has nothing, we are not saying that we are going to, just like beer or smoking cigarettes on town property, we don't find those people, we go up politely and say, you know, you're on town property, and you're not allowed to do this here. Okay? So, I would like to change that, that, that section four and take a look at what we can do, all right? And, and I guess...
Using option one.
Right, using option one, and let's get it out. It's still a draft, so let's put it on the screen as a draft and put it out there so people can see it. And I think, you know, we have somebody in the public, if they would like to speak about it, then let them speak with, about it.
Okay. Okay. All set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Vermont AOT grant of temporary rights for construction.
Do you have anything to say here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all, all right.
Bridge number 33 is scheduled to be constructed in the spring of 2021.
Can you tell us which bridge that is?
Yes, I will. Bridge 33 is the bridge, that's a state-owned bridge on Route 4, adjacent to East Mountain Road, just beyond the Skyship. There's a bridge that runs through there. They were going to replace that bridge originally in the year 2019 in the summer, and it was going to be one of those fast-track bridges. They were going to do it in 14 days, but they cost like 40% more, so they've changed to a full replacement of the bridge. Originally, they were going to, for two weeks, they were going to bypass on Mission Farm Road. That is changed to, now they're going to take the bridge out, replace it, but they are going to have to put in a, go, a pass bike trap, a temporary bridge. And in order to do that, they're going to be infringing on the towns right away. So, what they're asking for, and I need a resolution to authorize me to sign, to grant them temporary rights to use that land to put their temporary bridge in.
Are they only within the town right of way? There's no personal property involved?
Well, if there is, it's not, they're, they would be requesting that from those owners, and I'm, I'm not, I believe it's just town property.
So, we can't speak to personal property?
No. All we can talk about is what we're going to be conveying to them as a temporary easement.
And the months that they plan on doing this is not going to affect you?
It's the spring of 2021 through the summer.
Okay, and it's not going to affect anything in our right of way at that time?
Yeah.
2021?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, you need a motion to move forward with the temporary rights for construction in the towns right of way for Bridge 33?
Yes.
So, move.
Okay. Do you want to add anything to that? Okay.
We need the bridge done.
I'm sorry?
We need the bridge done.
Right. All in favor of granting Jim's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Number eight, employee handbook personnel policy.
Yeah, I gave you the, the personnel policy. It has all the changes that we wanted in it. I still left the draft on it because I forgot to do it when I printed yours, but I have one. If we do approve it, the sign that's clean. So, it's just a matter of verifying that. I know on the employee benefits section, we had a section in our retirement thing that talked about the security part that was confusing, so that's been removed in its entirety. Other than that, all of the other items have stayed as they were previously listed in our employee benefits program. And attached also is the alternative mel, medical health insurance coverage, alternative coverage document that's attached to it. So, this would be putting in place our official employee handbook.
Discussion?
You know, I'm going to come back to, on the employee benefits, the voluntary waiver or discontinuance of medical health insurance. I think I see in B that we've come down some percentage, is that correct? Were we at 45%? Now, we're at 38%?
Actually, when, no, it was, it was originally 50%.
Right.
Okay? It changed, and I can't remember which year it went into effect, but was when the Affordable Care Act started. The, the premiums went up to such a rate that what they did is they kept the amount of money benefit the same, but the percentage changed to match that, and it's remained at that level since. So, it was 50% down to 38 at that time.
I mean, I, I, I know like underneath the, um, the pension fund, that we've made it, we've made a change to say that anyone that currently is, instead of the five-year plan?
That July 1, 2018 was the time that anyone hired after that date doesn't get the town to pay their portion.
Right.
That's on the second page, yeah.
I mean, I, I would rather see us move in the same way with this medical health insurance. I believe that the Town of Killington is here to offer medical insurance to anybody that needs it and, and cover the premium. But if somebody wants to not take it, then I don't think, because if they're working out whose plan is better or whatever, that's their choice of even taking it or not taking it. It's only two people at tops at the most, and that's not now. I'm saying when this thing was going through, it was, the top was two people.
The issue is, is we pay for a, a, a two-person is like somewhere in the 14, 15,000 range.
Right.
If we decide not, and the reason it was put in in the beginning, based on my research, was that if they were not offered this stipend, they would take the health coverage and be, and, and take it anyway, so we'd be paying 14,000 or 15,000 instead of, at this point, 38% of that number.
And I don't have a problem with that, I'm saying. We're here to provide health insurance to our employees. You know, I know that there has been, where this, the way this is written out is that you have to show that you have equal or better.
Right.
And I know that becomes sometimes often cloudy, and it's not always followed.
Right.
And the reason why the Town of Killington offers health benefits to their employees with the 97% premium is to make sure that our employees are covered at the right amount. But by clouding it and saying, well, if your spouse has something better or whatever, I don't think it's up to us to figure, let them, you know, us figure out if that policy is better or not or whatever. We offer insurance. But we've had somebody that, I mean, it's already happened, and it's happened for many years, that, you know, they were on something that was way less than what.
Well, we have it listed as the, the equivalent plan that we match to when we do our numbers is the, is the platinum blue clo, blue cross, blue shield plan. We're doing the high deductible plan, but matching the maximum out of pocket for the savings. So, we list what it has to be equal to now.
But we did that, we said it had to be equal, and it wasn't followed.
That's an enforcement issue, and it will be followed from here.
Okay, it will be followed as long as you're here, is what you're saying.
Right. Right.
And I'm just going to say that I believe that anyone that is currently underneath here, but anyone after a certain date, it's, you know...
So, you want to add that same, that same process?
Right. I mean, it's...
That says after this date, we don't offer the 38% anymore?
Correct.
Will we do the same date then?
Well, you can't go back. So, you'd have to start it, we would start...
Oh, that's just 2018, I'm sorry, yeah.
You'd have to start that, we'd have to start it now.
Right.
So, as of October 1st or something.
October 1st or whatever it is.
Does it have to be when the, the first, of when the policy happens?
I would say, I would, I would think you have to have a policy in place first before you can say whatever, right? I mean, starting January 1st of 2020.
Yeah, and that would be fine. That's when the new policy actually starts.
Okay.
The new, the new health insurance policy renews on Ju, on January 1st.
I mean, this is just something that's big in town, and there's a lot of taxpayers who are like, I wish somebody would pay me 38% of what it costs because my spouse has insurance. And, you know, I don't want to get into matching people's insurance policies anymore. So, that's the one change I would make on there that we go to as of anyone hired on or after January 1st, 2020. Or you might go the other one, that this is in place for anyone that was hired before June, January 1st, 2020, right, Chuck? The town, the town pays such employee 38% of the cost of premium to the town for those that are hired bef...
Prior to.
Prior to.
Prior, prior to.
January 1st, 2020. And once again, I'm just one of three here, so you guys got to chime in.
No, I'm okay with putting it ahead. I don't want to make it retroactive.
No, I, I don't want, I don't, we don't want to take away from someone what they have.
No. People were hired under a certain...
Right. So, let's take example, like, are you elected or you?
No.
You're hired. So, you've been on for a while, and if some, some, you know, whatever, if you're not, if you are taking the insurance now, and, you know, three years from now, all of a sudden, something happens that your significant other, husband, whatever, can get a better policy or equal, and you could decide, and you would get the 38% underneath here. What I'm looking at is that anybody moving forward hired on after January 1st.
So, so not, if I wasn't taking the 38% now, I'd still be eligible?
You could still because you were hired prior to. That's what I, I don't want to, you know, anyone that...
Any current employees.
Doesn't, any current employees, anyone that's been hired or anything like that. It still gives you folks the option of what, what you are hired under.
So, it's really just going ahead?
So, now, when someone comes in after January 1st of 2020, and we may not be hiring anyone by then, but if, they know what the rule is.
Well, they're going to know upfront what the total package is.
Correct.
And that's the way they would be hired. You folks were hired under this package, so we're not changing that.
Right. All right.
Do we need to check with the lawyer to make sure the wording is correct on that item B? Can we just change it?
No, you can, no, that, this is, this is, this is our current policy. The lawyer didn't write this stuff, so...
Okay.
The town would pay such employee 38% of the cost of the town, of the premium to the town for employees hired prior to January 1, 2020.
Correct.
Is what it would read.
So, then we go into retirement benefits, and it's just, it's, once again, it's the way it's worded. The Town of Killington will provide two types of retirement benefits to its employees, namely, the social security system and Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement System.
I took that.
Full-time employees hired before July 1st, 2018, the town will pay the employee's share of the contribution after four years of continued service. We don't pay social security share at this time. It is, we pay the Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement System, and I'm okay with that. It's just that now, when you read that, it is saying that we will now start paying anyone before July 1st, 2018, their social security benefit part also, and I don't think legally we're allowed to do that.
I took out, I took out the whole section about the social security, but missed it in the first sentence.
Okay.
So, I can remove that piece.
So, we can just do that.
So, it would read, the Town of Killington provides retirement benefits through the Vermont Employee...
Right. There's no need to get into the social security, it was everybody.
No, there wasn't, and I had, I had taken it out, but I missed it in that sentence.
Right, okay.
I apologize for that.
That's okay.
So, okay, and... So, if you, the, the, I don't think we have any changes on the big part of the policy, so I didn't know if you want to approve any of that, or wait till that is, or adjusted and approve it with the, with those as conditions? Because I can then just, because I'm, all this is, is an attachment to the policy. It's not signed by everybody. So, that would be up to how you want to deal with that.
But can we sign it without this being attached?
No, it's automatically attached. I would say, if you make, if you were to make a motion to...
Yeah, I, I would have you bring it back because this, this last page over here too, I mean, it, it needs to be changed.
Which one?
The Swan Statement because it's, the, the Town of Killington requires that two voluntary wave. I mean, somewhere on here, you have to have that it's only for employees that were...
They just have the dates on it.
Hired at...
Well, yes and no.
Let's just do it right, so it's not...
It covers it in here, I think, this is just saying, if you meet those requirements, this is the paper you sign.
Yeah, I would like it on this sheet of paper describing what it is.
We'd like to have the date on both also.
All right.
Okay. So, we will...
Put that on the next one.
Add it and put it on the next agenda.
So, that's, so you go with the, I mean, employee benefits, the medical and dental insurance, what, this is, is this a policy?
Where are you?
This is, this, employee benefits?
Yes.
Is this a policy?
Well, it...
Or is this just a yearly thing? This is a pol, this is the handbook of policies? What is this document?
This is referenced as our employment benefits attached to the policy. So, this is a policy, but it can be amended at any time. The benefits, it, we can amend this at any time.
So, for now, I would just say that this is employee benefits for the, and just put down the time period here. We're going to be working on a budget in a few, in a few weeks, and I don't know if we're going to say that 97% of the premium is going to be the number or whatever, because we have to see what the rates are, right? And I don't know if we're going to say that ninety-seven percent of the premium is going to be the number or whatever, because we have to see what the rates are, right?
Okay.
So this is employee benefits for, and, and every year this should come out with, we should be doing this each year and, and looking it over.
So this would go to June thirtieth, twenty twenty?
Correct. Employee benefits up until June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Because if we go in and say, okay, I mean, I know at one point we were saying we were gonna, you know, maybe the town will pay, you know, ninety-five percent of the premium, and that would be going against this.
In that same paragraph, didn't the town go to an HRA as opposed to a?
Yes.
HSA? Uh, this still references HSA in it. Okay.
So yeah, we can just see the difference.
Okay.
I mean, everything else, like this, this thing here I read through, and this is great.
Yeah.
It really is. It's just a little couple of things here.
Yeah.
We got to clean up.
Well, that works for me. Okay. Anything further?
No. I'm good.
Well, someday Chuck's going to say something.
I thought you were looking at me.
Number eight, conflict of interest policy.
Okay, when we were last met, the request for the change was related to who it, who it affects. So the title now leads policy regarding conflicts of interest and ethical conduct for the town of Killington elected officials and employees. And I think that.
And I think we add set also appointed. Elected and appointed.
Anybody appointed is, is hired basically.
Hmm, no.
You want to put appointed too?
Elected and appointed officials. I mean, you know, you have a rec department, you have a planning commission department, you know? And then you have a whole bunch of, um, subcommittees, right?
Yep. This is going just like the rest of my day.
You have a supplement?
My day started going well today.
Nothing has worked exactly right today. Nothing really wrong.
Not supposed to.
Okay. Well, we had the audit today too, so that was always in it.
Right.
Okay, so we're really just looking at the wording of who's covered?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, it's elected and appointed.
And employees.
Okay. I mean, I think it's really a big thing that people understand when they're put onto a subcommittee. There are rules and regulations.
Yep. Okay.
I mean, Chuck, you say like the way your day is going. I mean, this town has never had a handbook in how many decades?
Oh, I understand. And no, I wasn't, I wasn't referring to a problem. I just, it's just like everything's been just a hair off.
Yeah, well.
For the whole day.
This town has never had a handbook of an, I don't think it's ever had an employee handbook.
No.
Okay, so great job, all right? We can end your day on that note, right?
More the fact that his computer stopped working in the middle of the day.
I mean, I was, I was trying to, I was trying to print off the one without the draft on it and, and I had unplugged it and forgot, and I plugged it back in, then nothing worked, and it just, I came over, I didn't think I was going to even have a computer. It finally fired up.
Okay.
It just was like nothing was going exactly the way you want.
Okay.
Good enough.
Well, then we're up to managers' reports where we can hear about your day.
Yeah.
There we go.
We start with demolition.
They start with demolition. That's, that's the right way to start the conversation. The, uh, just an update, obviously, anybody who's driven down River Road will notice that the, the teen center is now gone. Um, it's been in, it's in five dumpsters. We have completed it. It just, it, you know, one year the back deck fell off. We were using it just for storage and it couldn't be restored and
Yeah.
it just continued to be an issue and it was just time. And we actually had a, a rented machine we got done a week early with on the, the East Mountain Road and Dean Hill Road project, so we brought it down here and used that to help do the demolition. So it worked out really well. Um, so we completed that. We have to just re-hook up the electricity in that area because that's actually where the pump station is for the, the wastewater system that, that, that runs on, so that'll be going back in next week. Um, tax sale update. Um, I thought I had a specific date, but we are, part of our tax sale this time is including the fire district for one property. Um, and he asked that we modify it so it looks like it's going to be October eighth, um, for those items. Um, that's not confirmed yet. I expect to confirm that tomorrow, uh, because that request came right at the end of the day.
And that's just working with one of the districts, right?
That's correct. So once, once I.
Have to do that.
And the attorney. So I'm just trying to work with that and, and then we'll be all set.
Sometime in the month of October.
Sometime in the early month of October, we will be handling that.
Okay.
Um, budget review schedule. Uh, I just wanted to let you know, starting at the, at the next meeting, uh, we'll be doing financials and we'll also be, obviously doing these little cleanups. Um, and then starting the budget process, I'll, I'll try to keep the simple ones first and we'll get those out of the way where there's no changes and they're, and they're minor. Uh, but my goal is to have the operations budget and the first look at the, at the, um, capital budget complete by the October fifteenth meeting. Um, and just as a reminder, on October twenty-ninth, they're doing my other knee, so I'll be out for about a week and a half and then I'll be back right after that. So we'll be then picking up from there and probably doing the golf budget and things of that nature at that point, once they finish their year. Um, we'll be looking at those in November and, and any, uh, other financial issues. The only, uh, I think finance thing that's involving, uh, loans and, and things of that nature is the refinancing of the balloon payment, um, for the twenty twenty-one year. That's the year we'll be dealing with that. And, and I'm assuming at some point we'll know what's going on with FEMA. But today I still haven't heard anything related to that. Um, public safety building update. Um, we have received our wetlands permit for the, um, disturbance in the buffer. Um, let me pass those down. We now have all of the bidding process done and right now the last permit will be in place that we could start work will be ready for September tenth, assuming there's no other glitches. Um, so we've completed the, the construction budget. The construction budget, including contingencies that we took to the voters, was four million, three ninety-eight, eight oh nine. Um, then we had the hundred and fifty-six thousand for design, a building permit cost, telephoned and security allowance for a construction total of four million, six twenty-five, eight fifty-nine with, uh, a contingency in the paving section, because in this budget, uh, we've pulled the paving out simply because, um, the town will be able to buy it cheaper and not, we can do it as part of one of our road projects and we're just going to do that. It's still coming out of that money, but going to be done, uh, by the town. So we're looking at a difference, uh, for the construction of four million, four twenty, oh forty-four after all bids. It's a difference of about twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, and that's covered by the contingency money we have and the same one fifty-six for design, building permits, social security, or telephone and security allowance. Construction total meaning four million, six forty-seven, oh ninety-four, leaving a balance for paving and contingency at one oh two, nine oh six. Um, one of the things that I wanted to talk to you about tonight related to this is, um, in this process, they put out the bid to eight and ten bidders for each one of the items. The most we got in was two, I think, for any of the items, and most of these people, they've worked on uh, value engineering through the process and didn't, I just wanted to hear from the board that we want to go through the same selection process we did for the prime six for the other twenty or so, or, um, because the budget that I have here is actually the entire package that, of the whole, the whole piece of what, where we are today. Um, what we're hoping to do, um, in the short term is authorize the construction of the site work and the, and the foundations for the building. That way we could actually get started, uh, rather quickly. And then how you want to go through the rest of the process, we can go, but we know now numbers wise, um, that we're within the bond amount, um, to do the project.
So, so just, let's just go through this really simple.
Yep.
There was a vote put out to the voters. Do we have the actual wording of the bond vote? Do we have this year's tack, do we have this year's, I mean, I know you can pull it up on the computer.
Yeah, I know. I think I have it.
Go into, if you have the.
I know, I just don't know where to find that, that as easily.
And what was the exact wording for that vote? The town shall, so the town or the voters authorize.
Okay, shall the general obligation bonds or notes for the town of Killington in an amount not to exceed four million, seven hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars, subject to reduction from available state and federal grants and aid and the application of available reserves be issued for the purpose of construction, constructing a public safety building on land owned by the town and located on Killington Road? The estimated cost of such improvements being four million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's what the town, the voter, and I just want to make sure, I mean, the town of Killington residents voted for four million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And you're saying that this is going to come in at?
Well, as it stands, well, actually, and I'll just tell you, when I did this math, I realized I did it from memory and I messed up by twenty-five thousand. See, off by just a little bit all day.
Yeah, I'm just.
But this is to the good, because I subtracted it from seven million, or four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, so there's twenty-five thousand more. So I'm saying right now it would cost four million, six forty-seven, oh ninety-four, plus paving, which will be about sixty thousand. That's not, and this is what, this is dues numbers. So you're looking at four million, seven oh seven, oh ninety-four as it sits today.
Four million what?
Seven oh, seven oh seven.
Okay, so we're like sixty-eight thousand dollars under what we said.
Right. And here, and here I want to point out another couple of things, because if you really.
Well, I'm just going to, I, I'm good with that. That's all, that's all I want to get out there, because I know I have a lot of people coming to me where five hundred thousand dollars over budget, where this, where that. And all I want to make clear is, is that, you know, we put out a vote as a board.
Right.
And that, and, and everyone, and we, and basically it said that it was not to exceed four million, seven hundred thousand, seventy-five dollars.
Seven seventy-five, right.
Okay, now Chuck and I don't sit on that subcommittee, but you do, and you guys went and you did your homework. And you came in with a total cost that is underneath the four million, seven hundred thousand, seventy-five dollars, seventy-five dollars or whatever, okay? That's what you've done.
Yes.
So as far as I am concerned, um, it's just a formality that we must at least have all the other names here saying, and just come here and then we vote yes at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I don't want to get into, you know, what we did the last time.
Preliminary part will be done by the actual committee itself.
Right. And then I want you guys, whatever, and go there and then I'll approve. All I'm doing is sitting here at this table is, is that making sure that what we vote, what our vote is voted on.
Under the vote.
Is, 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 is there. I'm not going to get into the micromanaging of.
Okay.
Well, we were doing the same thing there.
The, the request I'm actually making for tonight is to authorize me to sign, this is two contractors we've already selected, which is Moser Excavating for the site work, Crete Pavers for concrete, that we would actually be doing a letter of authorization to get them scheduled so they could start as soon as the permits arrive. And what we're committing to is the four hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven oh six that's included in all of this.
And then the rest of it would be all. And who's the second one?
Uh, Crete Concrete. Crete Pavers, it's called.
Crete Pavers.
C R E T E Pavers, all one word.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to move forward with Moser Excavating.
Yep.
Um, allowing the town manager, I make a motion to allow the town manager to move forward with Craig Moser's contract.
And Crete Pavers?
I'll make that one.
Oh, separate, okay.
Separate.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So, all in favor of that motion, the excavation motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, and then Crete is the actual concrete. So I'm making a motion for the town manager to move forward with Crete for the concrete for the project, for, um, the public safety building.
Okay. And all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye. So if anybody asks me where we are on this, I can truthfully say that we are under the budget that they voted on.
Mm-hmm, correct.
That's all I.
So when I bring the, do you want D E W. to come in and present those names, or do you want me to just get a list?
I don't. I want, I want the subcommittee that we had go through it and then give us who they say, and then we sign off on it.
That's fine. Let's do that. All right, very good.
Yeah, and, uh.
I don't know what Chuck wants.
Sort of a, uh, the point of clarity is that, you know, we essentially awarded these two a while ago. We decided on it. And, uh, because I've had questions about, you know, we voted on it in March. The budget started August first. Why isn't anybody starting? We just received our permits from the state.
Yeah, and what I've been telling people is at that March meeting, all we did on those, even the electrical and everything, all we really did then was vote to accept the bid.
Right.
Today, we voted on to move forward with the contract and assign it.
Yep, right.
Okay. So the next, we're not going to sit there and go through vote to accept the bid.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to give us everything.
Get a list and a total with the, that'll be the.
And we're going to vote to move forward on awarding the contracts, not the bids. The last time we did bids. Because if, if those numbers came in, if these other numbers came in way over, then we weren't going to move forward and award the contracts to those five back then.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
So you did that right, Chuck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There you go.
Without a computer.
Okay, bond anticipation notes. Um, basically now we talk about paying for these items. Um, in, because we were waiting to make sure that the numbers were correct and everything, I didn't do the application for the bonds until this certain sys- system was complete. And the same thing with the, uh, with the, the road project where we have the million dollar bond that we're taking out. So what I've requested and the people's bank has offered to the town is two bond anticipation notes that we can take out. We will be, uh, applying for the, the permanent bonds in December. Um, they would be awarded in February and funded usually around the end of March, um, which would pay these back. Um, and they, there's two bond anticipation notes. One's for one million dollars, which is the East Mountain Road and, um,
Dean Hill.
Dean Hill Road projects, and that bill will be coming due. They're supposed to finish paving, um, tomorrow. Um, so we'll be getting a pretty big, uh, bill here shortly, so we're going to want to get this applied. And the other one is for three million, five hundred thousand. Um, and the reason it's not for the full four point seven million is because we will be funded long before we expend that last million dollars. So the timing of this is such that we will only need the three and a half million between now and then. Um, so I'm requesting a motion and signatures.
And I'll break it down to the separate also. I'll make a motion for the town manager to move forward with the one million dollar.
Bond anticipation.
Anticipation note for the road work in the town of Killington, that the voters approve the town meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Now I'm going to make a motion to, uh, let the town manager move forward for a, uh, bond anticipation note for three point five million dollars.
Correct.
To move forward on the public safety building.
Yes.
That the town of Killington voters approved a total of four point seven million.
Four point seven, seven five.
Seven point seven, seven five. At town meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
There's another page in here too, guys, that we, uh.
Oh, there's another page on the back?
Page three.
Okay.
And there's another. Is this just copies and copies and copies, Chuck? Or is it all one?
It's, it's all part of the same package. I mean, you know.
Like three different places so far.
Yeah, I know.
Found.
Okay, I just signed the top.
I'm not signing that. That's a W whatever form. There you go. There's like three different, all these sections. And if you can just at the next meeting, or whenever we find out, let us know what the interest rates are on these things.
They actually should be on there.
Should be in here. So if you just.
They're like two and a half or something like that, but I got.
Just get the right number so then we can.
Put the voters now instead of us reading it here.
Okay.
All right, it could be on.
Yep.
Yep. This is the one we signed.
I can get one if I were you.
Yeah.
It's pretty cheap.
There's only two signatures on this one. This, Jimmy, your pen didn't come through on that.
Well, my pen doesn't come through on this one.
Might be nitpicking, but it didn't really, it didn't show. I can lend you a pen if you need.
Mine works on my paperwork, it just doesn't work on this.
Fancy paper?
On this, uh, borrowing money. Works here.
Okay, and there's the second. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, department updates, just a couple of minor things. Um, just another reminder, the library, uh, Fairy Tale Festival is taking place on the twenty-first, I believe it is, or twenty-second of it would be the twenty-first and twenty-second of September, um, at the library. There will be, uh, many, many libraries represented, and it's been a successful event in the past, and I encourage everybody to attend who can. Um, secondly, uh, Trevor Patterson started with the highway department today. Um, he's been a new hire and. Excuse me?
Take that down. It's your calendar.
Oh, sorry.
It's your calendar.
On my calendar.
It's your personal calendar.
It's your personal calendar.
Trevor Patterson started today, he's working with the highway group. Um, and we will be, one of the things that the highway department's gonna be working on, um, over the next couple of weeks is starting to, we have four culverts we have to replace on secondary roads that are coming. But we're also gonna be, and, you know, so everybody doesn't, uh, get too upset, we will be doing all the tie-ins for any gravel driveways or things of that nature that need an elevation change. We're gonna be blending those in over the next couple of weeks, so, um, trying to get that cleaned up. And also, the pavers, if they're done tomorrow, or they're gonna be, tomorrow they expect not to work because of the rain Thursday, they're expecting to be done. Um, and they will be doing any of the ones that have to be paved in to get the blends back in. So we'll be working on those this week. Um, other than that, we'll move, if you have any questions on any of those things.
Can you just give me, not an update, because East Mountain Road is paved now, right?
Yes.
Okay, everything fell into schedule on that, correct?
That's correct.
So we had said when it was gonna be ripped up and it was gonna be exposed for a certain amount of time, and then it would be-
Probably missed by about four or five days in total.
But not weeks?
No.
But we also had weather that-
Yeah, uh, but I mean, it was within, it was in a reasonable, it was within one week.
Yeah, we expected it to be done when, when, before Labor Day.
It wasn't, it wasn't three, four weeks late?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
And it was paved before Labor Day, it just wasn't painted and the sides weren't filled in.
Right.
Yeah, and the paint, and the painting, as soon as they get it all done, then they'll have the painters come in and paint everything.
And this is where I'm gonna come into again, because I, I've heard people and seen people write things or whatever. And so, can you explain to the people in the town of Killington that Killington Road is a Class Two?
Killington Road, West Hill Road, and River Road are all Class Two roads.
And do we pay to have the, 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 um, yellow lines put down those roads by the state?
When the state, the state does all Class Two road, yellow line painting for all towns for free. Um, typically, there's been times where we don't get just the yellow done because our lines have been gone so long, we will paint before they get here. And if you do that, you just don't get them that year. Um, but they were painting Route Four, um, a little over a week ago. And they, when they were doing it, they did Killington Road, West Hill Road, and River Road, um, without our knowledge, without schedule.
And we never have that knowledge or schedule.
No, they will not tell you, I've asked a thousand times because I would like to know-
And then the next day-
We, we milled the, the project up.
But we did not pay for that yellow line.
That is correct.
And in the contract that we had going forward, we knew we're gonna have to pay to have yellow lines put in.
Yeah, all the lines are, actually, the lines, including all the fog lines, are going to be included with when they come after the paving project is done to paint everything.
So when we ripped up that section of the road, nobody, nobody, no taxpayer or nobody in town of Killington paid for that yellow line to be put down the day before?
That is correct, right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that people hear that.
Yep. Okay. Are you good, Chet?
I'm good.
Okay, do we have any liquor control?
We have a couple.
Okay.
We have an outside consumption permit for the Killington Base Lodge. Um, extended area around licensed Killington Base Lodge to Umbrella Bar Deck for the Spartan Race. Map attached, any questions or? Um, then I also have a first class request for a restaurant as well, for Hops on the Hill, 135 East Mountain Road. Um, this is a, I don't remember what.
It's a new one, yeah.
That's a new, that's a new license.
Do they own the building? Do you own the building?
No, no, I'm green.
Okay, so we, I mean, it's, how fast do you need this license? Okay, so you have, um-
You want a letter from them?
We have a policy in place for liquor licenses. If somebody doesn't own the building and comes in, they need a letter from the group-
Building owner.
The building owners.
Yep.
And we don't, we, we don't deny liquor licenses. So it's just a matter of formality, you know? We wanna make sure that somebody's not coming in and getting a liquor license without the owner knowing.
Yep.
Okay, so-
And I'm sure they're well aware of that, obviously.
So I'll make, that's the only ones we have?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one for the outdoor consumption permit, I make a motion for the town clerk to move forward.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. On the second one for a Hops on the Hill, I make a motion that the town clerk can move forward once a letter is received by the owner of the property.
You guys have to sign it, cause it's new.
Okay, well-
We can come in and sign it.
We can, we, once we have that letter, we can come in and sign it.
Yeah.
Okay?
So you wouldn't have to wait for the next meeting?
For the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we made a motion to go ahead as long as you get a letter from them saying that it's okay to open up a bar in their building.
Yep.
And then, and then the town manager will tell us that the, that the letter's in hand and we'll go down to the town clerk and sign it.
Okay.
Okay?
There, there is a Class Two license.
Yeah, the Class Two, they both say first class. They both say first class.
So I, the, my motion is for class, what, class one?
First class.
First class and second class?
There's a second class one also.
Well, my motion stands the same for first and second class.
Okay. I read that wrong. Thought we were both first.
Yeah, that way we don't have to come back for, just-
Okay, uh, all those in favor of the motion for the new permit, please say aye.
Aye.
Just as a point for you, if you have to come back, let us know what you're here for and we won't make you sit through everything else.
First time going to one of these, I was like, yep, nope, they, they were kind enough to let me know I could show up a little later to, cause I, and I looked at the minutes from the last thing to see when liquor control was, and I knew it was late, but I didn't wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for coming in.
And, and next year will be easier? Because it'll be on file.
Right.
Okay? Yeah, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Um, I have one thing under other business.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else? And it's as much a question as anything else. Uh, I, this was part of my message. Uh, with the amount of, uh, biking trails that are being built in town by, whether they're on federal property or private property or whatever, and they're all getting linked together, should there be something that the, somehow that the town is involved in this? And I'm not talking about setting up where we create a budget and do all that kinda thing. I'm just saying, is there a way that we can help them? Because it's generating, you know, people coming into town, it's generating business. Um, and I just wanna put it out there, you know, maybe we-
The mountain bike club does bring in a bunch of volunteers for a lot of different things. Um, we, we get a grant, um, for the construction of the new trails. But the pieces we've been talking about is, we get, um, a lot of volunteer help. And then the plan, when we're going through the budget this year, we'll also be looking at the maintenance of those trails.
Well, that's part of it is.
And that's part of the discussion of, we're gonna have to be adding some sort of amount of money a year that, you know, if we have to go in and clear something.
I understand where Steve's coming from.
Yeah.
He's saying, is there something we can do to help those private trails? And I would say that we're a town and we take care of our trails, um, with financial money or whatever. And, um, if we start taking care of a mountain bike trail that's pri-
I'm not talking about the federal land.
I'm talking about-
That's their expense.
I'm talking about private clubs that, that are not on, that's on someone's private land.
Okay.
Not federal or state. And you're gonna get everybody in here and say, well-
What about me?
What about me for my, my, my skateboard park? Or what about me for my, you know, whatever?
Well, that's why, that's why I want it out there.
And I know a lot, I know a few of those people, they really don't want, you, you're involved in the mountain bike, some of the other trails. And, and, and like Mike Miller, he doesn't want us really involved in his trails. He wants them to be his trails and he does it. And, I mean, I, I said, you know, we could offer, I'm thinking the same thing. Like, if we offered something like lunch just to get these guys something like what they're maintaining, he says he wants nothing.
Well, and just so you know, I assumed you were talking about the federal land trails, cause we're responsible for maintaining those. That's not the feds, that's, those are ours.
They're giving us permission to use theirs?
Basically, a land needs to be allowed to build them.
Yeah, and then maintain them.
And then maintain them, that's all our responsibility.
Okay, well, this needs to be out there, cause we've got a lot of different organizations that are building these trails.
Right.
And we just need to have it out there, what we're-
Liable for.
You know, liable for and also willing to participate in.
Right. And that was one of the things that Chet and I, in one of the KPAA meetings that we had gone to with this whole bicycle stuff or whatever, and it kinda woke us up that, you know, we do need to be funding for maintaining the trails that we have taken on, also in state and federal land, not only just on our own land.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, well, that was my one other business.
Okay.
Uh, is there a reason, and a reason for an additional executive session?
I would like to go in for personnel.
Okay. So entertain a motion to go in at, uh, 7:47?
Thanks a lot, guys. You want us-
Thank you.